Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call to order the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 6th. Just some general information for those of you who have not appeared before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Your petition will be read by a member of the panel. You'll be asked to come forward and either you or your representative explain your petition, after which time we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor, then we'll go to anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against. There may be questions from the panel at any point in time. I would ask that if you have a cellphone, please either turn it off or put it on silent so that the speakers are not interrupted. With that, I will ask Commissioner Llewellyn to read the first petition into the record, 2890 Broadbridge Ave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Our first petition tonight, item number one, is 2890 Broadbridge Ave. The petition of Vincent and Nadia Glorioso seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 4.2 of the side setback requirements from 12 feet to 7.8 feet, the overall lot coverage of 20% to 31%, and Section 4.1.6.14(c)(1) of the accessory apartment regulations for an addition for an in-law apartment incidental to a single-family dwelling. The stated hardship is apartment to be used for disabled family member, and there's no basement or attic storage within this dwelling.
Okay. Is the petitioner and/or their representative present? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, how are you? Nadia Glorioso, 2890 Broadbridge Ave., Stratford, Connecticut. Hi. And your questions, or did you?
Well, tell us what you're proposing.
Okay. So my mother passed in March, and she took care of my brother the whole time. He's 66 years old. He is legally disabled, and he has lived with nobody else or by himself this whole time. I told my mother I would always take care of him, so we want to put an addition onto the house. I don't have enough room only because I also have my son and my grandson living with me, which doesn't look like it's ever going to get, you know, they're going to leave. Okay, so that's not going to happen. So I don't have any room for him, so that's why I'm asking for an addition. As I said, I live on Broadbridge Ave., so I don't know if you're familiar with the houses there. They're on slab, and there's a crawl space for an attic. Okay, so far as storage or anything like that, we have none, okay? With kids and everything else that I have, four bicycles, you know, lawnmower, everything else, you know, you have to put it someplace. Can't just leave it outside, you know, for it to get damaged, decorations, you know, lawn furniture, things like that. So that's why I'm asking for an addition, to put my brother in so we could take care of him. He lives right here in Stratford, but it's kind of annoying going back and forth, back and forth to both houses, trying to take care of two houses, and it's getting a little bit expensive also on my part, taxes, both sides. So I'm asking if you could please grant me this. I don't think anybody would be opposed. My neighbors are all good. I've always kept up on my property, so.
Thank you. Commissioners have any questions? Also, for the record, Ms. Doolan is going to be sitting in, in Mr. Kellerman's absence, so Ms. Doolan will be sitting in as an alternate. Thank you. Questions from the commissioners?
I have a question.
Sure.
So the addition is for your, for who?
My brother.
Oh, it's for your brother, not?
Yes, he's 66 years old.
Not the disabled family member?
He is the disabled family, he is the disabled family member, yes.
And he can get up to the second floor?
Excuse, oh, yes. Physically, he can walk. It's just mentally, he can't take care of himself. He's never lived by himself. He is legally disabled.
Okay, thank you.
Have you had an opportunity to read the comments?
Yes, I see the proposed that you want to take me to take down the pool and the tool sheds. The pool has been there since I bought the house, so.
The question, Mr. Brennan, do we have, since it's within the 10-foot setback, do we know if there was ever a Board of Zoning Appeal ruling allowing that to exist?
I don't. I couldn't find any previous approvals. The only thing I was able to tell, I did an aerial search of it dating back almost, you know, to 1934, and from what I can tell, it's been there for more than 30 years.
I've lived in the house for 34 years, since '89, okay? The town of Stratford even came out and gave me a permit to put onto that deck. So it's well aware the town was, knows about the pool, that it's been there, it's grandfathered in, it's never been moved, it's never been touched, just the liner on the inside. And my understanding, they told me when he came out, he says, if you change 100% of the pool, then you have to move it. Otherwise, you could keep it right there where it is. And I do have a fence around the whole pool and a gated staircase, so nobody could get into it.
Do you have a fence between the property lines?
Yes, I do.
What type of fence is that?
Wood.
What's the height of the fence?
Depends on where you are. Four foot all the way around the whole yard, and around the pool, I'd say, so you can't see, you cannot see the pool visibly from the street. And it stands maybe about 10 foot, if, you know, give or take.
Okay. Next question. Looks like you have a series of sheds.
Yes.
Located along the property line in, I don't see a north, south, east, west, per se, but it looks like you have four sheds along the property line which are also inside the setback. When were those sheds constructed?
Those have been up there since, the first one we put when we first moved in in '89, okay? And then the other ones, 2006, yeah, 2006 has been the last one. So those sheds have been up there, and like I said, we have no attic, no basement.
Then, the sheds are inside the encroachment area as well. Do you know if there's been any application for zoning to allow a structure within that setback?
No, I was unable to find any shed permits or variances for them.
It's not cemented in. They could easily be taken down. But my question is, I had an addition put onto the house. Now, the town of Stratford came to approve my addition, the bathroom that I had put on into the back of the house, if you could see that?
Yeah.
Now, during that time, how many inspectors have been in my backyard, have gone through that section, seen the tool sheds there, never said anything? And the other thing is, anytime you came to reassess my property, which I know it's definitely two, maybe three times, and nothing was ever said to me.
Right. Just for your ratification, just for your knowledge, building department inspector is only looking at a building. They're not looking for zoning violations.
Okay.
Same thing with a tax assessor. They're just looking for the structure and improvements in the structure.
Okay.
So they're not going to be looking for anything of that nature.
Yeah, but we didn't know that, you know, you needed anything for a shed, so.
Yeah, okay. Any other commissioners have any questions?
Through the chair, Dan, does, a shed that doesn't have, that's not cemented in, does that count toward coverage, lot coverage?
Yeah. Yep. The only thing that, on this site plan that you're looking at that does not count towards lot coverage is the swimming pool itself.
Now, that's an above-ground pool, correct?
Yes.
When was the last, I'm looking at the plot plan. I'm seeing that, who, let's see, who was it? Richard Plain, land surveyor. So your land was surveyed to do this?
Yes. I, for the money, I had to, I got a surveyor and an architect to do everything.
Right.
And to remove all that, then I'd have to spend more money to landscape. I mean, your proposal is to, you know, maybe put in a basement or an attic on that new addition, but that's going to cost me even more money. I mean, I'm $7,000 already in the hole, and I didn't even get approval yet.
No, I appreciate that. It's just whenever I see on a pot, on a plot map that a bent iron pin is used as a site, I just want to make sure that there's been a survey, a formal survey done on it, and that the surveyor has signed off on the fact that that is in fact the property.
Yeah, okay.
Any other commissioners have any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Martha Soto. I live in 110 Carroll Road in Stratford. My backyard backs up to their backyard, not fully, but it's just the corner. We share corners. And last summer, we had an extension done to our property. It wasn't up, it was just extended because of lack of space. You know, those houses were built for very small families, closets are super small, no basement, no, you know, no, just crawl space in the attic. So I understand, you know, her having to put all her things in sheds and wanting to expand especially for her brother in this case. And I just want to say, they have maintained, they maintained their yard, their house, their front yard, their backyard. Like she said, their pool is fenced in, the entrance to the pool, and they're just good neighbors overall, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your input. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me, my name's Afif Safadi. I'm next door to them, and they have a swimming pool, and they keep pumping the water in my backyard. And that's enough, you know, to build, to add something, you know, to next to me, you know. Excuse me, I'm really tense, you know, because of that, and I expect neck to represent me, you know.
Okay. So your objection's not to the addition, your objection is to the fact that the swimming pool's within the boundary?
Yeah, I'm object.
Okay.
I disagree.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, sir?
No, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else speaking in opposition? Okay, hearing done. The chair will entertain a motion to close that petition for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close public hearing on item 1, 2890 Broadbridge Ave.
Motion by Commissioner Llewellyn, second by Commissioner Woodham. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Woodham, could you read number 2, 546 Riverdale?
Number 2, 546 Riverdale Drive, petition of Jane A. Schofield seeking a site plan review and variances of the rear setback requirement of 30 feet to 21.1 feet and the overall lot coverage requirement of 20% to 24% to construct an addition and deck incidental to a single-family dwelling. The hardship being the current house is three feet closer to the rear setback than neighboring homes.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner or their representative present? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Jane Schofield, and I live at 546 Riverdale. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to be able to speak to you tonight. So as you've seen from my application, I purchased my childhood home from my parents' estate about a year and a half ago, and I'd like to put on a sunroom with a deck on the rear of that. The sunroom doesn't require any type of variance, but the deck starts to encroach on the 30-foot setback by about two feet. I plan to have the deck to be about 12 feet wide and be able to have some sort of negotiation around furniture and things of that nature that you would have on the deck. There's no encroachment on the back of the property to another neighbor, so there's not an issue there. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioners have any questions? Have you had an opportunity to review the zoning staff comments? The letter that the zoning?
Yeah, I read that.
Okay, good. Any questions or concerns regarding that?
No.
Okay, very good. Questions from the commissioners? Okay, hearing done. Thank you very much.
All right, just one additional thing. I have letters from my neighbors that sit to the right and left of me.
Okay.
Happy to hand this to you.
Yeah, please, we'll submit them for the record. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Opposition. Hearing done. The chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this petition?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close the public hearing for 546 Riverdale Drive.
Motion by Ms. Llewellyn, second by Ms. Gibson. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Petition number three. Ms. Gibson, would you be so kind as to read 835 Huntington Road into the record?
Sure. 835 Huntington Road, petition of Scott Farquhar Harson, seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 3.1 of a rear setback required of 37.5 feet to 20.8 feet and Section 4.1.6.14(c)(1), comma 3, of the accessory apartment. It's an accessory apartment regulations for an addition for an in-law apartment incidental to single-family dwelling. And the hardship is unique-shaped rear lot created prior to the current rear lot regulations. Okay.
Okay, petitioner or their representative present? Okay, very good, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Scott Farquharson, 743 North Sycamore Ave., Los Angeles, California. I have some paperwork to submit.
The submitted paperwork are some pictures of the property, as well as a revised drawing, floor plan, and the posting of the sign on the property. Okay. I work for the contractor, Baybrook Remodelers, who are proposing this project. I am representing Raymond and Sharon Del Ray, the owner of the properties, at 835 Huntington Road, Stratford. Our proposal is to construct a two-story addition. The addition will be 30 feet by 20 feet, a total of 750 square feet on each floor. The first floor level will be used as an accessory apartment. The existing home is a raised ranch with three bedrooms upstairs. The main home would be used for their daughter, Jessica, and three children. The parents, Raymond and Sharon Del Ray, will be able to stay on the first level without climbing stairs and will be able to be helpful with their grandchildren. This has been Raymond and Sharon's home since 1980, and we, and they would prefer to stay there. We are before the commission asking for a rear yard variance. This home is in an RS4 district. Section 4.2 required lot area dimensions and coverage, calls for a 25-foot rear yard setback. The existing home has a 29.5 rear setback. But this is a, an interior lot, so Section 3.3.1 setbacks for interior lots would increase the setback requirement to 37.5 feet, and the existing setback would be 29.5 feet. The hardship is the unique configuration of the lot and terrain and location of the existing house on the lot. It is situated on an angle to the property. When you come in from the street, there's a long driveway, and right at that point, the house is situated, and if you're looking at it, looks like plenty of room in the rear and less room on the side. But because of it become, because it's the street side, the rear part of it is, the existing home sets over the setback line. And we are asking to allow a 20.8-foot setback for the addition, and that is because it is, it's also an existing non-conforming structure. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioner? Questions from the commissioners? If not, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Please come forward, please, and put your name and address for the record.
Brian Del Ray, 835 Huntington Road. I, the neighbor who this has impacted was not able to be here tonight, but he did write a signed letter.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition. Hearing done. The chair will entertain a motion to close public hearing on 835 Huntington Road.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close public hearing on 835 Huntington Road.
I'll second that motion.
And a second? Discussion on the motion. Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. That closes. I'll need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Can I second?
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now go into the administrative session. And we will call that to order at 7:23. First item on the agenda is to vote on items listed at the public hearing scheduled today, which we just adjourned. Petition number one, would anyone like to take petition number one off the table for discussion, motion?
Mr. Chairman, for the purposes of discussion, I make a motion to take 2890 Broadbridge Ave. off the table.
Motion to take 2890 off the table for discussion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Woodham. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor of taking it off the table say aye?
Aye.
All of a sudden, there was silence. I wonder what happened here?
[inaudible]
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are open for business on that petition. Discussion.
I guess I'm concerned about, you know, the pool that's been there for 30 years and the sheds and everything that's, I guess, is not permitted, even though they've been there for whatever. That's my concern.
The sheds do count towards coverage, and they are right up against the property line. One of the recommendations from zoning commissioners, zoning office, is that we could try to reduce the number of storage sheds, understanding that there's no possibility of a basement on that property or attic storage, which would be cost prohibitive. Maybe a consolidation of the storages from forced individuals to maybe...
How many sheds would have to be removed to at least, for lot coverage, to not be an issue?
I wouldn't be able to answer that because I don't know the square footage of the sheds. It's not listed on the survey.
I don't think the removal of the sheds would be enough to bring it into conformity, though. Yeah, like I say, I also have, I mean, I understand it's past the time of, the pool predates the zoning requirements, but the fact remains that it is right up against the property line. While it may not be cost-effective to move it, possibility would be, there's a four-foot fence there now, maybe if we go to a higher fence, which would also reduce the visibility of the addition from the surrounding neighbors is a possibility. Maybe, I don't know. I saw in another application that they had a six-foot vinyl fence. I mean, if we do something like a fence around it, I want to, I don't want to put too much cost burdens on the petitioner, but at the same token, a four-foot fence isn't necessarily getting done either for me. Anyone else have any comments?
I do know that pool has been there forever. I know the property. It's well-maintained. You can't, you know, if it's, if it's been there for 30 years and somebody came in and told them if they remove it, they have to then go into compliance.
Right, well, I'm not...
I'm okay with that, you know, but...
Well, I'm not suggesting that they, that they have the cost of having to move it. I'm just suggesting that maybe we provide a little more privacy on that side of the property line by putting in a higher fence.
I thought they said it was higher.
It's a four-foot fence. That, I mean, yeah, okay.
It's higher on the pool side.
But you didn't say how high.
Okay, so where the property goes.
Yeah, 10.
Okay, so it's 10, okay. So you have the house, the fence is right here, which is almost 10-foot high. And then I have latest, that covers one side because you have to be able to get to the pool to come around, right? And then going, the property slopes down there, so that's where the four-foot section is.
One-four-foot section is almost four feet high.
Yeah.
That's it.
So from the front.
Okay.
It's, it's, yeah, it's pretty high. And then on the side of the pool, going into his yard, I have all the latest, so you, but you can see the bottom of the pool. You can't see the top of the pool. And then there's a gate, and then the four-foot fence starts, which slopes down to the yard.
That's at the bottom of the pool.
Yeah. Then, fence height requirements, 10 feet's not allowed, is it?
There's no reason.
Not without a variance.
I understand that, but a 10-foot fence isn't allowed, so.
No, the maximum height without a variance is six feet.
No, well, it's a gate, three, uh, what's the height?
Two feet.
Two feet of latest.
It's not 10 feet, it has a decorating there.
So with the lattice on top or not, the maximum height is six feet, from grade to the top of the lattice?
That's facing Broadbridge Avenue, is that I, coming around the side, three-quarters of the pool is that I, and then it slopes the yard. So just where the gate is to get in and out of my yard, it's only four feet high with the gate. That's the only part. The rest of the back of the yard is all four feet high, which is nowhere near.
That's, that's not really what we're saying. What we're saying is you can't have a 10-foot-high fence anywhere.
Right, any, the maximum height is six feet.
Yeah, you may need it.
She was saying it's lattice.
He said it doesn't matter.
I have to take down that fence.
No, 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 we're not saying that yet. We're just, we're open for discussion, so I mean, all right. So now the fence is going to be removed. Are you going to replace the fence that's being removed?
No, the addition is in the front of that pool.
There's no way near that part.
Okay.
The addition is going to be in front of the pool.
All right, so. All right, so...
There's no way near that far.
While you were just describing it, were you talking about along the property line, there's a gate?
No, just the property line, right?
Yep.
Maybe towards the house, there's the garage, stick goes maybe nine, eight, 10 feet. There's my pool. I have the fence. I have a six, eight-foot, whatever, and then a two-foot lattice. Then going down the side to my neighbor's property, another eight, 10-foot section, and then the rest of my property is four-foot section.
Okay.
But that, that whole big fence is coming down anyways with the addition.
Okay. There's no gate into Mr. Safadi's property?
The what? Yes, there is a gate going. No, it's to get out, because, okay, when we put the gate up, it's for purposes, okay, we're classified, we can't get out from the front. We have to get out the back, okay? For us to leave the property, if it's gated, if there's no gate, how are we supposed to get out?
It's just not easy.
But so the gate, so in order for you to get off of your property, you access his property?
No, it's like about a two-foot section, maybe.
Like when I step, the wall goes over, I walk and he go into the wall. But to walk in and out, I mean, it's not.
No, we never, yeah. It's only for emergency.
I'm only going to get in because I have no dirt because he put it up, so I can't even walk down anyway.
Yeah, there's no dirt there anymore.
The fence is closed coming down that gate.
All right, so the fence between the pool and 2918 Broadbridge Avenue is being removed. Is that my understanding?
The front of the fence has to come down to put the addition up.
All right, we're not talking about any fencing along Broadbridge Avenue itself.
The side.
Right, the side, between your property...
So you want to take it down? Like, maybe there, it's only an eight-foot section, it's going to be real.
We could take that.
You want to take it down? Take it down.
Well, no, I certainly am not suggesting that you remove the fence between property lines. What I'm suggesting is that an eight-foot section is a violation of the zoning requirements.
Okay.
What I'm suggesting is that if the fence is coming down, that you replace it with a six-foot fence that's within conformity, that doesn't require variance from zoning.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that takes care of that aspect. As far as the sheds...
Mayor, it's, there's nothing, these sheds are nothing to brag about. It's just a little storage thing that I built.
Yeah.
And I wasn't aware it goes against the square footage.
Yeah.
It's not, I got it on the side of my property.
All right, I'll let them...
And I'm going to take my dogs out, I just put my tools in there.
Okay.
And even the neighbor can help me with that, while I'm leaving.
All right.
Except the one that lives on that side, so...
Okay. Anyone else in the commission? Does anyone want to make a motion to approve? Deny your table? Oh, it's the opposite side.
It's the opposite side.
It's the opposite side. All right, what I would suggest is that, what I'm going to suggest is this, I suggest that someone make a motion to approve with the condition of the removal of the existing fence and a standard six-foot fence be placed in its place that is within conformity to zoning. Leave the sheds alone. Leave the pool alone. So all that would be is the fence is coming down anyways, replace it with a six-foot fence so that there's a demarcation between the property lines. I don't care if there's a gate between the fence or not, but just replace that fence with some sort of privacy fencing that is not eight-foot tall, which is a violation of zoning. Because the fact that it's coming down is great, but you can't really have a pool between yards without a fence between it for public safety aspects of it. So that's what I would, I would hope someone from the commission would make that motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I just want to comment real quick.
Sure.
Where I am on Huntington Road, there are houses next to each other. One has a pool, one doesn't. It's pretty common for them to have the gates between the two properties, as we're suggesting, escapability. If you have some sort of an emergency, need to get off your property, just as a secondary access going from one property to another, it does happen. I have seen conditions where that's in existence before.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that they don't, but I'm just suggesting that we bring that fence within conformity, so we don't have an open violation.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this petition with the stipulation that the removed section of fence that comes down gets replaced with a six-foot fence that is in conformance with Stratford zoning regulations.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Gibson. Discussion on the motion. Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion passes 5-0 with that one condition. Thank you very much for your time and patience. Second petition on the agenda. Does anyone want to take that petition off the table for discussion? That's 546 Riverdale.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to take 546 Riverdale Drive off the table.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing then, all those in favor say aye. Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're open for business on 534 Riverdale. Oh, excuse me, 546 Riverdale. Chair, will entertain any motion? Any discussion?
I just, I guess there is no real hardship. And I, you know, can the deck be made smaller to conform to the requirements? I know the person mentioned, you know, for furniture, et cetera, on the deck, you know, to have it be 12 feet. I don't know if it'd be reduced so that...
I guess that's a possibility.
It's not a real hardship.
No, it's definitely a possibility. Any other commissioners wish to discuss it? No, sir. The public hearing's closed. It was only the petitioners. So that petition...
I'm not understanding the story, you know? I don't know how they're going to do it. I have a problem with it. They have a fence, and that gate goes into my property. And they, they put a stick people on my property, you know? That's not fair. You know, I tried to hire, so he said you have no left. You know, I don't know how come I don't have no left, you know? I can't put fence, you know, because they found the hole in my backyard, two of my backyard.
Mr. Brennan will discuss that with you in the hallway, so that you can, he'll talk to you about your options. We can continue while he's doing that. All right, so there's a concern about the fact that it's not a hardship.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to that point, question to the town attorney. What exactly is in section 8-6 of the Connecticut general statutes?
What specifically do you mean? Is it...
Well, it's just, it's cited in the zoning administrator's report in the last line. I just, I didn't know if that was something standard or...
Generally, the board, the law doesn't generally support hardships that are deemed self-created. Those are generally frowned upon.
Thank you.
That's, so I would say that Mr. Brennan's comments in that regard are legally sound.
However, he also makes the comment that the applicant's hardship claim that the house is setback further than the neighboring homes is compelling. So on one hand, he's saying there's no hardship, but on the other hand, he's saying that the argument is compelling. So I guess that leaves us to our interpretation.
That's kind of why I was getting to sort of the specifics and seeing if there was anything in there that might have been helpful to guide us.
And you guys are the ultimate fact finders. If you find that the house being set far back, farther back from the road than other houses in the neighborhood, and you deem that to be a hardship, then you're within your legal rights to grant variance.
I drove by that house yesterday, the day before, and behind that house is like marsh or whatever. And if it is setback further, I mean, you know, that's a hardship to me. And the neighbors don't seem to mind, so I don't personally have an issue with that. I know it's not, you know, self, well, it's self-created to build the deck or whatever, but I'm sure she didn't build the house three feet further back herself, you know?
Is this the property where the town itself is one of the backyard abutters?
I know in that section of Riverdale Drive that the town owns certain parcels back there. Possible.
I don't think anything would happen back there. I mean, nothing else could happen back there. It's not like you're hitting the neighbor or...
No, I agree, but does, it kind of gets to the point that like the hardship piece of it's kind of compelling, because not only are the backyard wetlands, but they're wetlands that are property of the town of Stratford.
All right, so we've had some discussion. Anyone want to make a motion? I wouldn't mind hearing a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve 546 Riverdale Drive.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes. Motion passes 4-1. Next item on the agenda is 835 Huntington Road.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to take 835 Huntington Road off the table.
A motion to take off the table, but Mr. Llewellyn, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second, my Ms. Witham. Discussion on the motion. Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're open for business on this petition. As I read the comments, it indicates that a legitimate hardship exists.
Yeah, it's probably the easiest of the three items before us this evening, so, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve 835 Huntington Road.
A motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimous, 5-0. That takes care of item number one on our regular meeting agenda. We now move on to item number two. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the May 2nd, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes of our May 2nd, 2023 meeting.
A motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any additions, corrections? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no cam site reviews according to the agenda. We have no erosion and sediment control according to the agenda. Members' concerns, comment?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, just wanted to make a quick comment that I'm really glad that we stayed with our 7 o'clock start time. I had another meeting at 5:30 this evening, and between that, traffic, weather conditions, I would not have been able to make it here for 6:00. So I know it's a little bit of a later evening for all of us, but it's already paying dividends.
I would say the same, because today I had a meeting that went over to 5:00.
Yeah, I think it's a public service to the community, because people who work in the areas and have more than a 30-minute commute based on traffic, anything can happen.
I agree with everyone.
I don't know why other commissions aren't doing that, other than for their own benefit of getting home sooner, but I think it's a disservice to the public, and that's just my philosophy. We went through cam site and erosion and sediment, because we had none. Okay, other items. Question, since July 4th is a Tuesday, I assume that we are the following Tuesday, or?
We are Wednesday.
We are Wednesday. July 5.
July 5, Wednesday, okay.
Okay, I know exactly where that is. Yeah, no problem. I'm around on the 5th. Anybody else have any conflict schedule-wise?
As we have no control with the weather, I believe July 5th is the alternate date for the fireworks.
Yeah, that is good. That is true, too. Yeah, we might be able to do that relatively quickly and be there before...
Doesn't get dark till 9:30.
I believe Mr. Town Attorney wants to weigh in.
Now, I was just going to say that this board has the authority under the Freedom of Information Act to simply hold a special meeting at a date that they would find more convenient, if they don't want to do that Wednesday, for instance, because of the fireworks. If they wanted to set it down for the following Tuesday, you guys would be well within your right to do that.
We're not sure if we have the room.
Yeah, I mean... But that's something that we could, Dan and the chairman can discuss.
Okay, we'll discuss.
Yeah.
Does anyone have a conflict with the following Tuesday, just in the event that that comes up? Because I'd like to have as many of the...
Is July 5th the alternate day for fireworks, or is it the day?
Alternate.
Okay.
The day, I believe, is the 30th?
I believe the, yeah, I believe the day is the 30th.
I think it's the 30th.
It's early this year, I think.
No, I think I'm okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll play it by ear. Let's see what happens. We're still open for additional petitions to come in anyways, right? Close us today, so we only have one, so, okay. I'm available the 5th or the 11th. Let me just, I don't believe I have anything scheduled. I definitely don't have time out from July.
How much time do you have to give if you wanted to cancel? Time limit?
Special meeting's 24 hours under the Freedom of Information Act, so...
We have up until before the holiday. Like that Friday before the holiday would make sense.
Which is the 30th. I mean, well, I've already...
It has to be posted in the paper, so it's actually sooner.
Okay.
Right.
I would say, I have no objection to going forward on the 5th, so... And if it's conflicting with the fireworks, I think we can be in and out of here in less than an hour.
Yeah, because it's just...
Parking would be a difficult aspect of it, yeah.
Dan did say that's a Berry Knott application, correct?
That is true. We have to go back to the history of property to 1639. But God bless him, he is thorough. He is thorough. But sometimes Cliff Notes, Cliff Notes helps. If there's no other items, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, off the record at 7:48.